And have Lana call the roll.
Too sorry.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hittelson.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Borsma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Truel.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
All 12 Alders are present. So, welcome and welcome back to Alderman Borsma.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We appreciate that you're back. Welcome to Lieutenant Jenks tonight. The Chief is out this evening, so we have Lieutenant Jenks with us. Are there any communications from our Alder persons this evening? Alder Person Borsma.
I'm back from Las Vegas and I certainly appreciate all the support and all the contacts and from the Council and other people from the city and it's just great to be home.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Alder Person Hirsch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to announce that Sustainable Stoughton is going to have a Green Thursday event next Thursday, November 2nd. The title is "Come Meet Your Local Farmer." We have six local farmers giving different presentations on the type of farms that produce that they do. We have an organic farmer. We have Darlene Ernestson that used to be big in, still is big in Stoughton. We have Jerry Went, the old FFA egg instructor. We have Door Creek Orchard, Parisi, Family Farms. We have Pleasant Springs Fish Hatchery if you're interested in learning about hydroponics and emancipation acres. And I think that's it. But anyway, there should be six and everybody's invited and it'll be a fun-filled kind of demo what they do and probably lots of different treats to eat as well.
When is the event again?
It's Thursday, November 2nd at the fire station starting at 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. And before that, what's even more exciting almost is Halloween. And the most popular question this time of the year is, "When is trick-or-treat time?" Lana, when is trick-or-treat time? I believe trick-or-treating is Tuesday, the 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. She's right. But that is the most popular question right now, so. Alder Person Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I went to, on this last Friday, I went to the Wisconsin State Historical Conference up in La Crosse. And one of the primary reasons I went there is because I wanted to go to take some coursework on tax credits for the state and federal and there was a lot of discussion on that while I was there. But also, as I was there, I met with the city planner of La Crosse who was doing a presentation and also the architect that they work with primarily up there is in preservation. And La Crosse is really strong on trying to preserve their, its old buildings. And we went on tours of a old stable that they renovated into apartments. They went, we went to another older building where a owner is changing those into lofts. And then we actually went to a candy company that was four feet or four stories or five stories high that they changed into a really interesting hotel. So I learned a lot and I have pictures and information if anybody's interested in it. But it was, it was really great to go and be around people that are kind of preservation-minded and things like that, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Further communications from our Alder persons? Excuse me, Alder Person Borsma.
Today I had the opportunity to go to the Wisconsin Social Work Conference at the Marriott and the one half of the day was dedicated to a program called Housing First. And it's a program that's happening in Milwaukee, a great program and I think it fits very well with potentially our dispatches with the HATS program, the Housing Authority of Stoughton or Housing.
Housing Epic is a team of Stoughton.
So it's a, it's a very interesting sort of concept that where people, if they're homeless or if they're lacking housing, that they provide people housing first and then they deal with all the other issues that are related to the family and problems. Great concept and I'll be talking more about that in the future.
Thank you.
Along with Halloween, I also let everyone know that if they're not aware, downtown has the Halloween trick-or-treating on Saturday, I believe, 3:00 to 5:00. It's a great event, helps a lot of local businesses and gets a lot of people out, so.
Great, 3:00 to 5:00, okay, Saturday afternoon. NAC Chamber Director Laura Trotter is here. I was going to ask her, I know she's not prepared for this, but can you tell us about the Destination Stoughton weekend that's happening this weekend?
Certainly, shall I?
Yes, please.
Well, thank you for asking. This weekend is Destination Stoughton. There is a group in town called the Norwegian Summit Group, which is a compilation of many organizations in town that have a interest in preserving our Norwegian heritage. And they have identified a couple of events throughout the year that they decided to build into a weekend. This weekend's is the Wisconsin State Rose Melling Association's annual holiday sale and it will be at the fire station training room. That's the signature event of the weekend. A lot of other things are going on throughout town, events at the Sons of Norway Lodge, Lips Risa, and also the dancers will be performing at the community building. They're going to be performing, I believe, at 2:00 on Saturday and there are going to be the judges for the chamber's costume contest for the little kids. And then they're going to have a parade through to downtown for the trick-or-treating there. So many events are going on and the whole schedule is available on stoughtonwi.com.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions? Thank you. Yep. Any other Alder Persons?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to let Council and community know that last night we had a gathering with some Landmarks Commission folks and they were joined by a couple Alders. Alder Person Jensen was kind enough to come to the meeting. Alder Person Truel was there, as long as Commissioner Barman and Attorney Dragney was there as well. We covered a lot of ground. I think we're making progress on our ordinances as it relates to the historic overlay and some of the other issues with Ordinance 78 and 38. So you could expect if you're on a commission or a committee that some of that work may be delegated toward you, so I want to give you a heads up.
Thank you, thank you. Before we move on, we all remember that Alder Person Mijaski had requested some research regarding the verbiage of handicapped parking versus disabled parking. And Chief Leck did some state statute research. And I don't know if Dan, if Chief, he's got that look like, "Nope, Chief and I did not talk about it."
No, he did mention it about changing the name to more proper disabled person.
Yes. Yes, so he did look at that and he'll know Ordinance 16 tonight talks about what we had previously identified as handicapped in our ordinances. So I think when we get to that point, point in our agenda, you can either decide, do you want to table Ordinance 16 and send it back for rework as well as have all the other, what did I say, nomenclatures in our ordinances that talk about handicapped parking? Or you can go ahead and approve Ordinance 16, refer back to the Public Safety Committee to identify those places in our ordinances that need to be changed to disabled parking. All of our signs downtown and other places do have the appropriate verbiage on them. It would simply be an ordinance amendment and we can talk more about that, but I wanted to, to let everyone know that Alderman Mijaski had made the request and we followed up and we'll make some changes.
Thank you.
You are welcome. We have a presentation this evening of I-90 County Road End Interchange by Steve Thiessen with the Wisconsin DOT. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Olson and the Council. My name is Steve Tyson. I am the Communications Manager for the Wisconsin DOT overseeing the I-3990 project. With me tonight is Eric Frayling. He's with MSA Consulting who handle the roundabout designing. So tonight we'll talk about the I-3990 and County End Interchange with some specifics on the interstate construction schedule for this area. So just sort of outline of topics, talking about the interstate construction schedule specifically to County End and the interstate expansion near the interchange. And then Eric will talk about what is a modern roundabout? Why are we constructing roundboats at various interchanges, including County End, and our public education and outreach efforts related to that. So for our 2017 construction schedule, the I-3990 expansion project, if you're not aware, extends between Madison and Beloit and is expanding the interstate currently from two lanes in each direction to three lanes in each direction for the 45 miles. And we started the project in 2015. Here we're almost finishing up the 2017 construction schedule and the entire project will be completed in 2022. So some of the projects that we worked on this year, some bridge replacements, you may be aware of the County AB Bridge over the interstate just south of Madison was replaced and lengthened. A few other overpasses closer in Rock County. We're working on the County End Interchange reconstruction, some temporary widening that's going on right now between Highway AB and East Church Road and also working on some interstate expansion. Again, the permanent concrete as you see in that picture near Edgerton as well as working down toward the Janesville area. So for County End Interchange, we began construction in late April. We've had the interchange ramps open at all times beside some periodic nighttime ramp closures and actually tonight is one of those instances between 10:00 PM and 3:00 AM, we're going to have the southbound on and off ramps closed to facilitate a traffic stage or a traffic switch. Otherwise, we keep those ramps open at all times as well as Highway N between the interstate and Rinden Roads. If you're taking Highway N north to Cottage Grove, that roadway is closed until late November, so about another month. We do have a signed detour route using the interstate in the Highway 12 and 18, otherwise I'm sure you know locals using other routes in that area. The interchange roundabouts themselves will open up here in the next couple of weeks. The roundabout just south of Road Ranger and the BP Gas Station just opened up last week, making sure that we encourage people to yield to the left when entering the roundabout. And the entire interchange will be completed in December of this year. Associated with that work is the interstate expansion down below near County N. We just started that back in September and that'll continue until next November in 2018. We always want to maintain two lanes open in each direction besides nighttime lane closures between 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM, Monday through Friday. Otherwise, again, we're expanding the interstate. We've done some of that expansion on the southbound side and later this week we'll actually have traffic shift onto that permanent concrete as crews remove the rest of the existing southbound roadway and continue moving that project through the winter months and then next year. And again, having the interchange ramps open and accessible for the businesses and the neighborhoods in that area. So I'll turn it over to Eric to talk about a roundabout.
So briefly, what a modern roundabout is, it's a compact circular intersection where traffic flows counterclockwise around a center island. The entering traffic yields to circulating traffic and the approaches are channelized to deflect the traffic and slow entry speeds. There is a little bit of confusion with some other similar type intersections. Rotaries and traffic circles are also circular in shape, but those are much larger, faster, and they also have, entering traffic has the right-of-way over circulating traffic. A third similar type of intersection is a neighborhood traffic calming circle. Those are typically installed in lower-volume residential neighborhoods. So to delineate a modern roundabout, first we have a warning sign with the advisory approach speed, followed by if it's a multi-lane roundabout, we have the approach signing which guides motorists into what lane they should be in to whatever destination they would like to go to. So why are we doing roundabouts? Well, they're the safest accurate intersection type that we have today compared to a standard intersection. There's 32 total points of conflict in a traditional intersection, 16 of which are what are known as crossing conflicts. And those are the most dangerous type of conflict that we have in an intersection. That's where you have your T-bone and head-on collisions. Those are typically where you'll have your most severe injuries or fatalities. With a roundabout, we dropped the number of conflict points down to eight and we completely eliminate the dangerous crossing conflicts. So why Wisconsin and other surrounding states have gotten into looking at roundabouts? The Insurance Institute for Highway Safety did a study back in the early 90s on roundabout safety and found that the overall number of crashes was actually much lower than a standard intersection with the biggest drop being with fatality and severe injury crashes being almost 90% less. Now, Wisconsin did a follow-up study with 56 of its roundabouts a couple of years back. They did find that there were an increase in fender bender type collisions, but they did confirm a drop in the serious and fatal injury crashes by almost 40%. Focusing more on the County End Interchange, this is a rendering of what the interchange will look like when it's completed. There'd be a total of three roundabouts, one at each ramp terminal and then one further south accessing both of the existing gas stations. This view is actually looking southward down towards the Stoughton area. Because it's a multi-lane roundabout, it will have a full complement of overhead signs and pavement markings to guide motorists in the proper direction based on their destination. So why are we doing roundabouts at the County End Interchange? Well, with every major intersection project, it requires an intersection control evaluation to be completed. And this, for this interchange, we looked at stop control, traffic signals, and of course, the roundabouts. And what was found was that they had similar right-of-way impacts, similar costs, and very similar operations. The traffic signals, however, were projected not to meet the official warrants for installation. Therefore, we looked at the roundabouts, which had the safety advantage and slightly better operations, so ultimately the roundabout was selected. So from a public educational standpoint, because of the increase in the property damage-only type crashes, we're trying to get the word out on how to properly use a roundabout, what some of the things we're seeing are. And right now on the screen are two examples of exit-related crashes at a roundabout. On the example on the left, you have a vehicle that was following the yellow path circulating out of the roundabout in the inside lane, which is perfectly legal in this case. The vehicle that would be following the red path did not yield to both lanes, therefore causing a crash right in front of the exit. This further reinforces the need to yield to both lanes of entering, both, I'm sorry, both lanes of circulating traffic. In the example on the right, again, the yellow path is on the inner lane exiting. However, in this case, the vehicle following the red path is in the right lane disobeying the pavement markings and attempting to make a left turn. And because the pavement markings and the design is not for that movement, it causes that path to crash over the yellow path as it was not intended to. We also noticed some issues yielding at roundabouts. In this scenario, we have a car waiting to enter the roundabout and in this case it'd be perfectly okay for that car to enter as there's no traffic immediately to its left. However, in this situation, it's not okay to enter. There is a gap, but it's by far not large enough for that vehicle to safely enter. Instead, you would need to wait for that circulating traffic to pass by and then it's safer for the vehicle to enter into the roundabout. They are designed to accommodate large trucks. One of the methods that we do this with is with a design element called the truck apron. It's designed to allow the rear tires of the truck to ride up on the apron as the truck navigates the roundabout, but it's also designed such that it's to discourage regular vehicle traffic from driving over, let's say, drivers in a standard passenger car or light truck. Now, there is a state law that went into effect in 2015 regarding navigating roundabouts with large vehicles stating that motors are required to yield the right-of-way to larger vehicles that are 40 feet or more in length or 10 feet or wider. Now, some would ask, well, how do I know if it's some, if it's a vehicle that's 40 feet or longer? And kind of the rule of thumb is that if the vehicle is towing something or if it bends, like for instance in a semi-truck configuration, chances are very great that it's over 40 feet. And if that fails, if you have no clue how big the vehicle is, just give them a little extra space and everybody goes home without a scratch. To further reinforce the, this truck law, you don't want to be in the case where, it's probably kind of hard to see from a distance, but you don't want to be where that red car is trying to enter into the roundabout right next to the truck. Instead, you want to kind of hang back of that truck and kind of keep that area shaded and yellow open so that the truck can safely enter into the roundabout. Similarly, for circulating in the roundabout, you don't want to be where that red car is that the trailer can swing over into that lane and pinch any vehicle that's kind of in between there. Instead, again, keep that yellow area open and just kind of hang behind the truck until the truck exits through the roundabout. Case in point, this truck is entering in the right lane into the roundabout. However, as it starts to circulate, the trailer tends to follow its own path and ends up kind of drifting into the inside lane. Luckily, in this case, the van driver held back and everything, everybody was able to get through the roundabout without any issues. Finally, with the emergency vehicles, there's three basic things to keep in mind. If you're entering a roundabout and you hear somebody behind you, pull over, let the vehicle go by. If you are circulating in the roundabout, however, and you hear somebody coming behind you, finish your movement in the roundabout, exit the roundabout and pull over, then let the emergency vehicle get by that way. Finally, if you have not entered the roundabout and you hear an emergency vehicle coming from a completely different direction, let that emergency vehicle make its way through the roundabout. As soon as they're out of the roundabout, then go on your way as you were intending to go. Finally, Steve, with a couple of closing comments?
Thank you, Eric. So this is our project website for the interstate project. A lot of great information out there pertaining to the entire interstate construction schedule, different exhibits, displays. We have an animation video out on our website for the County End Interchange. If you're interested in looking at that, family or friends or coworkers who want to know more about the County End Interchange, we have resources available on our website. At the top of this page as well, we have a signup for updates tab. Some of you may already receive the construction notifications. However, you click on that tab, enter your name and email address and every Friday afternoon, excuse me, you receive weekly construction notifications about lane closures, ramp closures, upcoming traffic impacts, upcoming public meetings, newsletters, any other information about the project. It's a great way to stay informed and connected as we continue the project. So with that, we'll open up to questions. Before the meeting started, there's handouts placed in front of you. Those, again, are the major points that Eric mentioned, the always yield to circulating traffic, the truck law that went into effect in 2015, making sure you choose your proper lane before entering the roundabout, as well as the brochure on the County End Interchange. With that, any questions?
Alderman Borsma. I was just curious, the off-ramp going from 39 to 90 to end is like four to five times larger than what it was. It seems that's a large expense for an off-ramp. Why is it so long?
So you're heading south on the interstate to come County End?
Yes.
So that one, so where you're exiting right now is not going to be the final condition. It's going to be brought up closer after the Williams Drive Bridge. The reason that the ramps are out farther is to provide more room for deceleration and then for the on-ramps, acceleration onto the interstate. So the previous interchange configuration was built in the late 50s, early 60s where vehicles didn't have to get up to speed as quick or slow down as much. And so with that, the footprint grew further out to provide that accommodation, especially for large trucks that access the Road Ranger to slow down in time before they reach the roundabout.
Yeah, it just seems awfully pricey. Thank you. Alder Person O'Connor.
On the diagrams, it doesn't show any plantings in the middle of the roundabout. Does DOT have a policy on that or position on if there should be unobstructed viewing or if plantings are?
There is. There will be, there will be plantings in there. It's tough to show on a piece of paper, but there will be plantings and then that rendering picture that Eric had up earlier, there will be sort of a mounted section in the middle that discouraged people to look straight across. That's the whole point of having that mounted area, whether it's through trees or prairie grass or any bushes, to encourage people to look to the left before entering, again, to discourage that cross view.
Any other questions? Well, we have the experts here. Alder Person O'Connor.
Maybe more for Dan. Have we had any problems with the roundabout?
I knew someone was going to ask. Not that I'm aware of. It's been pretty clean out there, so. Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. We have an update next on the Highway 138, Oak Opening Access Discussions by Planning Director Scheel.
Contained in your packet is actually a summary of where we're at, but as you'll recall, the Council had directed a development group in the city to work to obtain permission from the DOT to gain access at Oak Opening Drive with State Highway 138 as part of a future phase of Kettle Park West. Those discussions have been ongoing. Alder Person Swadley and the Mayor and I have participated with the DOT alongside with the development group to put the premise of that agreement together. I've outlined kind of the main points of the draft agreement that you'll be seeing likely at your next council meeting. Ultimately, it'll be a three-party agreement. It'll include the Town of Rutland, who has also been participating in the agreement discussions, the city and the DOT. What it does approve is ultimately approves a connection of Oak Opening Drive with State Highway 138, with the first phase of construction really being a right-in, right-out movement, not allowing left turns out of that location to begin with. However, as development would progress and development to the south or farther to the west or traffic warrants, that's, that intersection would become a fully functional roundabout with an anticipated fourth leg continuing to the south as well. The other aspect of the agreement that we anticipate having is Veek Road. If you're familiar with Macomb Road where Macomb Place is, there is a connection of Veek Road to State Highway 138. We anticipate working to have Veek Road closed and the fourth leg of the existing roundabout extended to the south where Macomb Road would be redirected to connect with that southern leg. And so those are the, those are the primary points to highlight. The other, the other thing that's noteworthy is the DOT really is looking at trying to master plan this segment of State Highway 138 from 51 all the way to Stars School Road. So they're really not anticipating the city having a future request for access along this corridor. Our comprehensive plan indicates as much as well. We're certainly not trying to have additional connections. We recognize the fourth leg of the existing roundabout at Kettle Park Way is an appropriate connection to the south and this proposed connection at State Highway 138 would really lend itself well to expansion to the south when development would warrant that in the future as well. Like I said, we hope to have the draft agreement for your consideration at the November 14th meeting. The DOT has their legal team working on. The bullet points that I've summarized here in a more legal manner. Our city attorney will be participating in review of that prior to it coming to the Council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Otherwise, we'll bring more information back in a couple of weeks. All right. We have your minutes and reports within your packet. And next on the agenda is our public comment period. I don't have anyone registered to speak at this, at this time. Is there anyone that would wish to speak at the public comment period? Our consent agenda this evening consists of the October 10th council minutes and the October 12th Committee of the Whole Budget Workshop minutes. Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bartlett. Does any Alder Person wish to remove that, an item or make an amendment to those items? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion second, our motion carried. Ordinance 15 of 2017 comes from the Public Safety Committee for a second reading. Alder Person Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth Ordinance 15-2017, amending Chapter 70-134 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the deletion, deleting of subsection A and the renumbering of subsection B to subsection A and subsection C to subsection B, all that. What it means is it eliminates a loading zone on South Water Street and I'd recommend approval.
There's a motion by Alder Person Truel. Is there a second? Second by Engelberger. Alder Person Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Both Ordinance 15 and 16 are related to a particular park, a particular space on Water Street. The business at that location had originally looked for, had originally requested the loading zone, I believe, at some time in the past and is now looking to convert that to a disabled vet slash handicap parking space.
Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Ordinance 16 of 2017 comes from our Public Safety Committee as well for a second reading. Alder Person Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth Ordinance 16-2017, amending section, excuse me, amending Chapter 70-198 of the Stoughton, the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the creation of subsection 17 and designating the third store, excuse me, third stall north of Main Street along the west curb of South Water Street as a handicap, soon to be referred to as a disabled slash vet, veteran parking space. And I would move approval.
Second. There's a motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
And I would definitely take up the earlier item. We'll make sure that Public Safety will go through and clean up the ordinances to accurately correct or accurately reflect the disabled slash veteran space instead of handicap references in the past.
Thank you. Comments regarding this particular space or on ordinance 16? Alderperson Hirsch.
I guess I need a clarification. Can we just amend this ordinance to change the language from handicap to disabled vet? Or do we have to send it back to Public Safety?
There will be others within our ordinance code that need to be amended as well, which is my comment about we might as well clean them all up at one time.
Right, but instead of delaying this one being passed, is that a possibility?
I think you can go ahead and pass this one as it is.
Yeah.
The signs that you put out there on the street that are posted by our Public Works Department say the proper words.
Okay.
Those are posted properly, so I think we can go ahead and post this. Our ordinances need to be updated.
Okay.
And we can do that. Alderperson O'Connor.
I just had a question on the veterans denotation. Is that disabled veterans that you're referring to or is it all veterans? I'm not exactly sure.
I believe that's, that's what the signs actually are and.
I know they say disabled.
They're disabled?
But I don't know anything more than that.
I would think disabled encompasses all the designations.
So there's comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving ordinance 16 of 2017, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Ordinance 17 comes from our Public Safety Committee as well for a second reading. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth ordinance 17-2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to add section 70-156, parentheses 26, bracket 26, of the Stoughton Municipal Code to designate Whole Avenue as a through street, and I would move approval.
Motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
The key thing to understand as a part of this is by designating a street as a through street, what that does is it allows the cross streets to end up potentially having stop signs placed in it. So again, we have a number of through streets in the city that are meant for main thorough affairs, and so that's, that's where this request was coming from.
Thank you. Just as a note, there was a question last time as well as what are some other through, through streets? So as you'll notice on the resolution 17, we've listed some other through, through streets. That's hard to say, other through streets for your information. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ordinance 18 of 2017 comes from our Public Safety Committee for a second reading. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. We bring forth ordinance 18-2017, amending section 14-7 of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the authority to grant licenses, and I would move approval.
Motion by Trul, is there a second? Second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
I'm going to defer this one to Lana to again, once again, the ordinance is in the packet, but if you could again explain the slight changes that this is taking up.
Sure. So this ordinance would bring our code book up to par with what state statutes require. Currently, our ordinance allows operators' licenses to be granted by the Chief of Police and myself without governing body approval, and that is not in accordance with state statutes. So what this would do is say that it will be reviewed by the Chief of Police and the Clerk's Office, but ultimately the governing body must approve all operators' licenses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Resolution 83 of 2017 was tabled by Council Action on June 13th, 2017. I'm going to hand this to Alderperson Trul because he hasn't spoken at all yet tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Redevelopment Authority brings forth Resolution 83-2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to award the bid for the Milfab site demolition in the Riverfront Redevelopment Area located at 433 East Cell Street, and I would move approval.
Motion by Trul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Alderperson Trul.
You may recall that when this first came, I had made the motion to table it because at that time we were, we had not gotten the official grant from the state. It was tied up in the state budget discussions. This project is approximately $330,000, of which we are receiving $150,000 in state assistance. And so since that, the state grant has now been authorized, we're bringing forth this project. We are anticipating that with this award that demolition can, will likely start within a couple of weeks. And the contractor has given us a sense, Earth, Earth Construction has given us a sense that they believe they will likely be done in about 60 days. So again, if we move forward with this, we'll hopefully be starting it, you know, in early November and potentially have it, have the buildings and everything out, out there as a part of this project done by, by the end of the year.
Thank you. This, I was also talked about at Finance tonight, so Alderperson O'Connor can update us from Finance.
Right.
I didn't mean to interrupt you though.
Yeah, and I was just going to mention too, if you've got specific questions, Gary Blazek, who's our consultant on this, is also in the audience this evening.
Great. Well, we'll go to Finance Chair O'Connor first.
Well, they just mentioned that there were some additional fees that were in there for doing audits and.
What? Funds?
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, I didn't hear that. There were too many things. Could you say that again, please?
I'm sorry. At Finance, we were also informed by Mr. Becker that there was additional fees in there for auditing required by the state.
Okay, great.
About $5,000.
Yes, yes, correct. And funding is already currently available to take care of that. And Alderperson Trul, did you want to have the consultants come up and speak to us?
If there are questions of, from council. Gary, do you want to come up?
Because he brought things to show us and everything. We got to see it.
With me is John Osgard. He's actually the owner of the contract, contractor for Earth Construction, so if you've got specific construction, he's the expert, not me. I can give any questions or try to answer any questions, design-wise or how this is all going to take place between John and I. So with that, any questions?
Okay. Alderperson Borzma.
I just have a question about what specific buildings are you planning on to?
That one's easy for me here. I've got a colored map here. Here's, South Street is on the top of the, so it's, it's the six buildings that are along the River, Yahr River here. This is the former highway trailer building where the street is blocked off right now because it's in jeopardy of falling apart, and this is the former carpet warehouse. So the entrance will be between the two buildings, but it's actually back here, the Milfab site, these six buildings is what the contract is for currently.
Thank you. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, if you could answer a number of questions, I think that the community definitely has. I'm going to throw them out and I've got a number of them, but first off, hours of operation, when will you actually be doing work down there?
What does your, what are the city hours? I mean, are you seven to four or seven to five?
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven. It'd probably be, this late in the year, it's going to get dark, so it'd probably be seven to five o'clock, 4:30, somewhere in there. We won't be working in the dark.
From a standpoint of the six buildings, have you determined a sequencing as to what you're going, where you're going to start and where you'll be proceeding?
The one is the heavy asbestos building, that one, they want to get in and start working on. They'd let me start on a couple of the other buildings, but I can't do anything until the abatement contractor goes through that building, which that, that's the biggest, I guess you'd say headache of that because that has the largest amount of asbestos in it.
From a standpoint of, I assume that you're going to be attempting to recycle a fair amount of the metal from the, the couple pre-engineered metal buildings, things that are down there?
Correct.
Will you be staging material as you're taking buildings down or how will you be doing things on a, on a daily basis in terms of removing, removing either, either stuff that's going to be going to a landfill or being due to recycle center?
Waste, waste that comes out, that goes to the landfill will be removed daily. We haven't got into recycling yet as of whether we're going to crush on-site or haul off to a pit that recycles somewhere else. It's all based on, you know, my cost on it at the time and how much is there. I can't tell you what one I'm going to do. I'm going to do one of the two. Iron would be the same way when it's taken down, it'd be loaded in dumpsters and gone off to a recycling plant, so it won't be, I want to have as little as possible on the ground and load it out right away.
From a standpoint of, of your daily, your daily lows that you're taking out, have you decided or do you know the route that you'll be taking in terms of coming out?
Right on South Street, you'll come right back on South Street and get to 51. That way it'll either head to 138 or I-90. One of the pits is the Utica Pit that John Holverson has, he takes recycled concrete there, but anything would come on South Street right to 51.
And again, one of the concerns that was expressed at, at one of the Redevelopment Authority meeting and then also Public Safety, given the fact that, that South Street itself is actually closed in front of the highway trailer building, so what you're indicating is, is that we'll, we'll come out along the highway trailer building is the access point. So then you'll, are you intending to go straight up Fifth Street or will you be turning left and coming over to Fourth Street to get out to the stop and go light?
Matters not to me. It's what you guys want. If you want me to come back to, this is, I don't know my directions here. If this is Fourth, if you want me, I would probably come right back to Fourth, easiest with the least amount of residential, is that, I would come back to Fourth and go to 51.
Part of the question also is the types of trailers or equipment you'll be using to haul and can you give us a sense of the size of the trailers or what you might be actually taking off?
Regular, our large trailer's 48 foot with a semi-trailer. If we do take the concrete off, it'll just be in quad axle dump trucks. Same thing with a scrap iron, he'll roll in with probably a 53-foot gondola, so it'll be full-size semis.
Other questions of council?
You're sure you have enough room to make a turn for, with a large, a large trailer on that and to, if you make a left turn on, onto the street, is there enough room to get out of that?
Oh, yes. I believe so. We're good.
Alderperson Johnson had a question.
Hi, I've had a couple constituents call me that are animal lovers and they're concerned about if there is any habitat or anything there for animals, if there's a chance that somebody could get in there to try to remove them. So I just, I'm just putting that out there.
I think there's some big raccoons down there.
I don't know that for certain, but I think there's big raccoons. Be careful.
They're pretty resilient. When we start, they usually find their way out. The only thing would be cats or stray cats. I don't know if you're like my village, but if you pick them up, do you have to pay a humane society for everyone you drop off? It's a cost to the village or a cost to the city. I'm okay with having somebody go in there or while we're working stop. We're not there to cause any problems or anything like that.
All right, thank you. I'll look into it. I just want to be, I want everyone to be okay with stuff, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Borzma.
One more question. There's a, there's a fair amount of wood in some of those buildings, or at least there were when we took a tour of it. Any, any ideas what you're going to do with all that wood?
It probably goes right to the landfill. Reason being, there was a project in Beloit that was bedrock grinding. They were a recycling company that was managed by the DNR. They took in material, took in material, took in material and never got rid of it. Now the DNR's stuck because they never did any inspections on the number three hauler into that place. I don't know what's going to happen to it, but that was managed by the DNR. They took no bond, no bid. If I would have known that, and they charged the same price as the landfill, but they were supposed to be green. There is one other one, but actually everything that's green unless it's subsidized by the government, it does not work.
One of the, one of the issues that we had talked about when we took the tour was whether or not people from the community may want to take some of that wood. That's, that's my question.
I can set stuff aside in a pile, but then that comes to be where if they have insurance or someone cuts themselves on a nail or they're on the project site or they do anything like that, then that's going to open it up to your insurance also.
Yeah, that's something we'd have to run by our risk, risk manager.
Yep.
But we can let you know, Sid. Alderperson Kittleson.
I'm kind of wondering about the traffic plan. There's a couple bus stops that are here. I mean, if you guys are going to start at seven, typically the kids are picked up about 7:35 or so forth. You have Uniroil there that I believe they have a dumpster dumped off. Is it twice a week? Once a week? And that waste management truck takes up that whole intersection and they're there for, I don't know, five, six minutes? So I don't know if we've really looked into the route out, route in for you guys on this with the street being closed. Am I making sense? Do you understand where I'm going from?
I'm wondering if they can work directly with Dan and the police department on what might be the safest route to, you know, be careful of the kids and other types of things.
Especially over here by the library because they jump across the street all the time. You know, and if it's dark, slippery, wet, I'm not saying you guys are going to do anything, but I, I just would hate to see that as a young person would just jump out. I'm really questioning the route in and route out for this and the timeframe of seven o'clock start. I don't know. That would be my question.
Alderperson Trul, are you comfortable with that, having them work directly with?
If I take a load out in the evening, the next day coming in, first thing I'd come in with one truck, but it wouldn't, but it wouldn't be, you know, not at seven. I don't have a fleet of trucks. We have one truck. Truck will come in and if it's a problem of staging, if you say you don't want me to leave, any loads to leave there past eight or 8:30, I'm okay with that. You know, we can tell, you can tell me what time, once the kids are in school, that's not a problem. Just tell me that, you know, you're not going to leave here until after 8:30. I'm okay with that. You know, we have stuff that we can do on-site and that whole site's fenced, I believe, correct? So we have stuff we can do on-site. If you set a time perimeter that you don't want trucks entered and leaving, I'm okay with that.
I think it would, like what you had said, is work with the police department to get a little bit better feel of what's going on there.
Alderperson Trul.
And I think that's, that's kind of where I wanted to start the discussion because unfortunately you weren't able to join us last week when we, when we discussed it, but I think between the police department and public safety, we have, again, as a backstory, Public Safety did look at, had specifically had a meeting to talk about what we're going, how we're going to handle emergency vehicles with South Street, the part of South Street already shut down. And so I think we just need to work together. I just wanted to make sure you were aware and, and we've had a lot of, some of the neighbors had actually come to the, the staff meeting last week and were asking some of these exact questions. Where are the trucks going? You know, are things being left? Will you be hauling, you know, at the end of each day, basically taking things off or will you be staging things down there? So it really was, was a combination of discussions about kind of the level of nuisance per se on the site and then also just the, the access to and from. So I think that that's probably our best way is, is as we're ready to start, perhaps we can, we can set up a meeting with the police department and talk about best routes and just make sure it works for you as well.
Yeah, let's include planning in that too, kind of a short little tech advisory meeting.
I don't think, I don't think we've gone over it enough or with the funding that when this whole project was delayed and maybe that's the redevelopment committee or the, or you as the council, is that something that we haven't got into talk to crushing on-site? Is that going to be, I think when we did a walkthrough, it was listed as an option that we can run a crusher there on-site between certain hours. And the other thing would be to leave that material on-site for future development. I guess, I guess I haven't looked into it. I haven't talked to Gary because I didn't know. It's all just starting up to how we're going to proceed if it goes forward.
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to have a follow-up discussion just to make sure we know what's up because again, part of the other discussion is, in your bidding, was an alternate to save, to save some of the bricks for future. At this point, we don't believe we need to do that, so it's really a case of us finding the most safe operation for, providing the most safe operation. And if crushing on-site, I think Gary, we can definitely work with, with you and with city leadership.
Okay, great. And would you like to facilitate that or should we have Rodney sort of work collectively, the two of you put together that meeting?
We'll figure it out.
Figure it out. Thank you. Alderperson Borzma.
Thank you, Your Honor. This may have been addressed and I must, I may have missed it, but how do you plan to secure the site when you're not there?
It's completely fenced now, I believe.
Yeah, it's fenced now. It's got a gate that's locked right now, so.
Okay, so you'll just close that gate when you leave and then-
Locked every night.
Lock it and get ready for the next morning?
Right.
You're not, I would assume that you're not working on Sundays?
No, I think ordinance goes Monday through Saturday.
Thank you.
We're all taking turns with the sneezes. Alderperson Hirsch.
With respect to the bricks, if you crush them onsite, you're taking off to recycle, right? Recycling place or where do the crushed bricks or cement go?
That was what I hadn't talked about. If I, cost-wise for me, if it's cheaper to hire the trucks and run it to one of the pits that crushes it and reuses it, I'll do that. If it's cheaper for me to have a person come in and crush it and leave it onsite, you know, if there's a developer that needs it, obviously there's value in it, I'm going to do what it's ever cheapest for me, whether it's haul it off or have someone come in and crush it onsite.
Okay. With the crushing onsite, what is like, I'm just concerned about the neighbors. Is that a really loud, because there are some houses that are right there onsite surrounding it. So is that going to be crushing for like 10 hours and is it going to be to a point where they're going to go crazy? What's the noise part for that? I'm just concerned about the neighbors.
It doesn't sound like it worked.
Definition of noise is different. Mine's pretty tolerable, so I can't really say, but yes, it is loud. You know, that's one thing we can talk about too. I mean, if you people say that, you know, you don't want it, it's going to offend these neighbors and you tell me no, I mean, you're the ultimate decision that we're going to make on it.
But would it be eight hours a day or would you do like for an hour or two a day?
No, no, not an hour a day. They'll come in, I would lease this out to another company that would come in, like Frank Brothers has a mobile crusher. They'd come in, they'd set up, they'd run eight, 10 hours a day. Project that size, I think there's 80,000 square foot there, they'd be out of there in probably four days if all the material's processed and ready to go. I can't, I can't bring, that would be the last step because I have to have everything ready for them to go in a pile. They come in, crush it and then they leave. So it would be a week, five to, eight to 10 days, five to 10 days that they would do that and be finished.
Sure.
So it's almost-
I see Alderperson Trul taking a note. So that's something that you'll talk about at your upcoming meeting.
Yeah, and just as a frame of reference, when we were previously talking to our master, our master developer for the property, he had indicated that there would be a value in having the material there because there's quite a grade change. And so it was in that discussion that this even came up. So we'll need to revisit it, but I was going to say the same thing. The assumption is that it would be a separate corporation or a separate company that would come in and would probably be fairly intense for a number of days. So we'll-
Yeah, it's not something we do. They come in, they have to fill out the MSHA, OSHA paperwork for a mobile crusher to come in, do what, they don't want to be here any longer than they have to. So I would assume it would be no more, to safely say it could be a week, it may be up to two weeks, but not in that timeframe.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
With that, and I guess with Rodney too, if you're at the point of crushing, is it a possibility that we kind of send out a notice to the neighbors just to let them know that in the next two weeks, this is what's going on so that they can be prepared, at least maybe a week in advance, so they can be prepared if they have something that they've scheduled that's quiet, that's just not going to happen?
We can keep them updated on the activities and what's going to happen. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Otherwise, I think we're ready to go ahead and vote by roll call. Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Resolution 141 of 2017 comes from our planning commission as well as a tabled council action on September 26th. Alderperson Trul.
We bring, planning commission brings back Resolution 141, 2017, approving a conditional use permit to allow an in-vehicle sale and service use for a fuel station, pick and save at 1750 U.S. Highway 51-138, and planning commission recommends approval. I would move approval.
There's a motion to approve by Alderperson Trul, second by Alderperson Hirsch. Alderperson Trul.
Within the packet, you may recall when this came last time, there was, we had a council discussion about whether or not the modifications that were being made to the parking lot constituted a either expansion or new lot. And Rodney, I would turn it to you for some of the information you provided.
Yeah, I provided a summary of my understanding of the ordinance that indicates that this isn't an expansion, enlargement, or extension of the parking lot. There was concern about the addition or creation of additional tree islands in the areas that were related to the tractor supply, goodwill and/or pick and save. Those site plans have really all been approved and acted on separately of the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit before you today is related to the in-vehicle sales for the gasoline sales in the front portion of the parcel. So planning commission reviewed that and recommends it for approval at this point. The applicant is here. Mr. Craig Whitehead is here if there's questions for the applicant as well.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
Rodney, thank you for putting that all together. With respect to, I'm just trying to make sure that we have enough stalls because with that, and then we had approved earlier that the tractor supply company could park their trailers in a number of spaces. Are we still have enough spaces on that lot for, you know, those three stores?
Yes. There was adequate number and I don't have those in front of me, but they were in the literature. There was an assessment of the entire site and the total number of parking stalls meets the code, even with the additional improvements here.
Even with half of, you know, a number of them being used by the trailers.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further comments or questions? All those in, oh, I'm sorry. Alderperson Johnson.
Rodney, I've got a question for the previous, this is on something that you mentioned that we went ahead with as far as for approving that it wasn't a new area as far as a parking lot. I'm not making sense. But you said in the ordinance that you viewed it as that it wasn't a new parking space so they didn't have to do any new and upgraded things.
Yeah, the blanket, blanket variance language, yes.
Was that voted on at planning and it never came to council? Is that correct?
Planning commission reviews the site plan and they reviewed it consistent with those ordinances.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderperson Trul.
I was just going to say that there was, plan did recommend this. Again, it was at council that Alderman Mieske asked the question. When we actually, you may recall that that night we had talked about a number of the other changes that had happened through the course of the last few weeks, last couple months. And so it was at that point that he asked a very good question about whether this should be, we should be looking at this differently. And that's the result. Having said that, back to specifically the item before us is the conditional use and plan approved at seven to nothing. Thought it was an appropriate use.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries with one no. New business begins this evening with Resolution 150, 2017. This comes from our planning commission. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bring forth Resolution 150-2017, a resolution by the City of Stoughton City Council approving a certified survey map to combine the properties at 500 Dunkirk Avenue in the City of Stoughton and I would move approval.
Motion by Trul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hirsch. Alderperson Trul.
As you'll see in the packet, this is, this will allow the property owner to build a detached garage. That was their intent and so what he did was effectively, is now combining the lot as Rodney has it on the board.
Yeah, this person actually owned two parcels. There's a property line that ran east to west, right along this part of the plan. This CSM combines the existing parcels under single ownership and allows them to develop as part of the single-family residence, the additional part of this parcel.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Alderperson Hirsch.
Is the detached garage for a business or actually for a house?
It's part of a single-family residence, so it has to be related, well, I mean, there's uses that are permitted and allowed, but it's for a single-family house.
Okay. Alderperson Mieske.
There's no attempt to clean up the deck encroachment?
Yeah, that's an existing encroachment as you can appreciate there's, and it's not under their control. The existing owner of the parcel that's being created hasn't had a concern about that. I think it's a long-standing deck. It's not something that went up last week. That one's been there for quite some time, so there isn't a movement to try to change that at this point.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Resolution 151 of 2017 comes from our Public Works Committee. Alderperson Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 151, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the planning department fee schedule effective January 1, 2018, and I would so move.
Motion by Jensen, second by Engelberger. Greg, could you move your mic just a little closer, please? Thank you.
Got it. This is just a, well, I'll let Rodney speak to it just to bring our fees up to standard.
Yeah, this is a more comprehensive assessment of where our fees are and also in comparison to other communities. We did this about five years ago and we have created in this resolution, consistent with our last one, an attempt to continue to update them on an annual basis based on the CPIU for the Midwest region. But even though five years have elapsed, we've certainly have identified a deficiency or an opportunity for us to adjust our fees slightly. Containing in my budget request for the 2018 budget also anticipated this fee increase, so that's built into the budget amount. The estimated fiscal amount of $9,000, again, you can look at each fee for each item, but it's really dependent on the number of permits that we get each year. So this is using an estimation of the amount of fees consistent with what we've recently had in the past.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Alderperson Borzma.
And just a clarification, we did talk about this at Public Works this last time we met on October 17. There was some discussion about whether this is a good idea to have to do this every year, if we should delegate this to somebody to set a new fee if we need a new fee. I think we all, we all agree that it probably is better the way it's written. At this point, I would say that we have a circumstance right now with the tree commission where our public works director makes appropriate changes in the amount of fee for trees, which also works in a positive way. But I'm still in support of this, but I did want to say that that was brought up as a possibility.
Thank you.
Maybe if I could just respond to that, you can see that we've got a very specific process outlined in the resolution that we have to follow in order to adjust the fees on an annual basis. Not every year does every fee go up. You'll see that there's some language in here that if it doesn't create a percentage increase, it actually doesn't increase. So we track that annually. Certainly the books are open for anybody if they'd like to look at how we do that, but we follow that model that we've used over the past number of years as well.
Thank you. Without additional comments, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Resolution 152 of 2017 comes from our Public Safety Committee. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 152-2017, authorizing the council approval of the City of Stoughton Statement of Policy relating to alcohol operator licenses. I would move approval.
So motion by Trul, second by Jensen. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Effectively, this brings our policy in line with the state statute. The change, we can no longer have either the clerk or the police chief issue operators' licenses without council approval. So this will require that all the operator licenses will have to come before the council going forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Council President Swedlin.
Just a quick question on that. So the chief will still make a recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
So in the past, he just made, if he didn't have to make a recommendation, it was just automatically passed, right? Go ahead.
So currently, well, up until now, what has happened is applicants will come to the city clerk's office, they'll fill out the necessary paperwork, and we forward it on to Chief Leck for his recommendation. Anybody who he finds to be approved by his standards and the standards set forth in the policy, we automatically issue the license without any further authority other than myself. This would change it in that all licenses, whether approved or denied by the chief of police, would need to come to the city council for the final approval.
Thank you. Alderperson Trul.
And you may recall, every time we've seen license over the last, you know, whatever period of time, but we've had a number of them in the last six months. Those were cases where an applicant was recommended for denial by the chief and then public safety either moved to approve or whatever, but then we've seen the applicants come and come before us. And so again, we were informed that effectively that's no longer the process. So we will have, the governing body will have to take action on all of these.
So the state of Wisconsin has mandated that we do this. Was there any rationale or they didn't think we had enough to do or?
I don't know if that's the case necessarily. Our ordinance was changed in 2011 to allow the chief of police and the city clerk to just issue them. The authority was given by the common council at that time and that was in accordance with state statute. I'm not sure exactly when that changed, but it was discovered at a recent training that I attended, so I wanted to make sure that we were in compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Mieske.
The question was asked.
All right. Alderperson Borzma.
And this, this happens a number of times a year or do you try to have those come in at certain times?
So anybody can come in and get an operator license at any time during the year, so more than likely you will see approval of operator licenses on your agenda. Most every agenda, probably.
Every week.
Yeah.
Alderperson Engelberger and then O'Connor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm assuming you're going to bring us like a list of, to approve a list rather than each one individually?
Right, yeah.
And I guess the other question would be, is this going to create any problems timeliness wise?
So the process pretty much is the same on our end as far as what we need to do for approvals and background checks and things of that nature. The ones that are approved by the chief of police will not have to go to public safety prior to coming to council. They'll come automatically to council. This will create a delay for the applicants that they're not used to seeing. However, they do have the option to apply for provisional operators' license, which would be good for 60 days that they can use in the interim until the council approves their regular operator license.
Is that an extra cost?
Yes, it is.
$10?
It's 15.
So people are going to have to be on the ball and get signed up with things in a timely manner, as opposed to just coming to you off and saying, I need a license right now, or I can't work, you know? So people are going to have to understand that.
Alderson O'Connor.
We'll be able to handle those under consent agenda items?
Yes, please. Thank you. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? I got to say, these ayes are kind of, you've got to pick it up there, guys. It's not aye. Let's move on. Resolution 153 of 2017 comes from the Community Affairs Council Policy Committee. Alderson Reeves.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 153-2017, authorizing council approval of the City of Stoughton Statement of Policy relating to Board of Review waiver of hearing requests, and I recommend approval. And I'll paraphrase the way-
Second.
Oops. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We got it. Go for it. Go right ahead. See, she's excited. I was asking for some excitement. She's excited.
I was excited not to talk.
Alderson Reeves.
Anyway, so I will paraphrase the way Clerk Crop explained this to us. This would allow a business or individual to, and correct me if I'm wrong, bypass the hearing. This would be in cases where they would likely be going to court, so in this event, the individual could bypass the Board of Review and just continue on with the appeals process.
That is correct. Thank you. Comments? Alderson Borzma.
And we were trained on this, on Board of Review this last time we met, and it was, there's a video that's available, I think, for everybody if they want to know how Board of Reviews work, but this was a provision that was, I think, pretty practical revision in the, in how we used to do it.